Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Board of Selectment meeting regular agenda Tuesday, September 4th, 2018 at 7:05 PM. I call this meeting to order, and please join me with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Announcements, I asked the town administrator to extend the board's wishes to Ms. Margaret Carroll.
Ms. Margaret Carroll, I just wanted the community to be aware that Ms. Margaret Carroll has recently taken ill, but however, having seen her this weekend at a local hospital, I just want you to know she's doing terrific. She know that she's an icon in our town, and I asked her, I said, how much did she want me to tell the community? And she says, well, it's always good to have wishes and prayers. So I'm hoping that she will make a full recovery. I will tell you that everything cognition-wise is clicking away as always. She did say that right now she would just prefer to get those wishes and good thoughts in her direction. So we wish her a very speedy recovery. We all love Margaret, and I just want you to know she was, you know, thrilled to know that the town was thinking about her this past weekend, so.
Thank you. Item three on the agenda, the minutes of August 20th, 2018, regular session and the executive session minutes.
I'm going to accept the minutes for Monday, August 20th, 2018, special town, uh, executive session as well as the regular Board of Selectment meeting minutes.
Any discussion? Entertain a second.
Second.
Roll.
Aye.
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 I abstain.
You abstain, you were excellent.
I was.
Department, Board's item 4A, Highway, Mr. Malali. Good evening.
I was asked to come to the Board to give an update on the work on Chestnut Hill Road. Workers started last Friday with cleaning of the drain line. They wanted to come in a week prior when school started. I held them off. That's why you might see the paver up there already. Held them off due to figure there's enough confusion with school, with bus routes and kids and bus stops. So they came in on Friday when the, to start with the drains, with the school being closed on Friday. With that being said, we didn't have the luck that we wanted with just getting the line cleaned out, so as of right now, it's looking like either this Thursday and Friday, they're going to be doing some excavation between, I believe it's 268 Chestnut Hill in the, where the pipe discharges. It seems to be a slight break in the pipe, which could be part of the erosion problem we have right there in that section of road. So we're going to do some investigating because there's a 15-foot section there that we could not get through with the jet truck. I have to spend five hours up there with that. Coming both ways, 181 feet one way, 95 feet the other. We're still missing about 15 feet to clear it through. So with that being said, if all that goes well, we have the milling of the road, which was wanted to Murray paving, and the paving of the road is done by Hashaw, and that is all through the consortium bid that we do with Bellingham, Blackstone, and Hopeville. So with any luck, you know, this project should be completed within, we'll say, in the month of September.
Just one item to.
I'm going to be talking to him after the meeting about a couple items.
Okay.
I already told him he can't leave.
All righty, thank you. Thank you for your update.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
No questions?
Nope. And I appreciate you getting back to me when I text you about that information. I know you have other things to do.
Item B, Blackstone Millville Regional School District. In our meeting in June, we established going forward joint meetings with the community of Blackstone and ourselves and the school committee. And this is just a reminder that that event, that joint meeting will occur on September 26th at the Hotnick Middle School at 6:00 PM.
I did also forward you an email that came today from the chairwoman of the Regional School District who did say if there are any particular items that people would like to have on the agenda to actually, you know, forward them to her. So I've forwarded to our finance director and also will be sending it to the finance committee as well, but I think she had received the majority of them, so.
So if you have an agenda for that meeting, please forward it to Mrs. Maggio. Correspondence, KP design or selection thresholds.
Mr. Chairman, this was another thing that I think that was a holdover from the Massachusetts Modernization Act, Municipal Modernization Act, where it tries to give more flexibility to communities, and they have increased the design fee estimates from $10,000 to $30,000 and co-project construction from $100,000 to $300,000, meaning that when they, two of those exceed those new thresholds, then they would have to, you know, apply selection designer criteria, which can be quite lengthy. Now by increasing that, it's, it actually is helpful, and hopefully we don't have any major projects that we could have to do that, although we keep thinking about our district school and some of the things that they have on their horizon, but, you know, this will
Next, it's, I seem to have lost that portion of the.
Do not ask them, ask them.
Are you looking for?
Our payments?
Find them.
Our payments?
The Blackstone Millville Regional District.
Yeah.
Do you need it?
The, the payment schedule, in that prior to August 1st, the obligation to the school district per month would have been, it's called, relates to a 1/12 payment, a total commitment or appropriation by the town, and that was $504,548. That was a 1/12 payment. Since, since then, we have adopted budget, and the payments now will be quadrupled into the amount of $648,481.21. These amounts are due on 9/15/2018, 11/15/2018, to February 15th, 2019, and May 15th, 2019, for a total of $3,098,473. And that breaks down to Millville's minimum contribution is $2,074,258. Exclusionary cost is $507,276. Additional contribution, this is supplemental, and that's $337,804, and capital budget, $1,000, Item C is Northeast Water, water reports from the elementary school for bacteria, copper, and lead. We have a report dated August 15th, result that the samples, Northeast Water Solutions indicates that the samples were absent for bacteria and all samples were within drinking water limits.
Mr. Chairman, if I might add, there was one small caveat that the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection required from the previous year where there was a slight change in the lead/copper results that we had to actually, the firm that actually does all the water testing, had to actually respond, and they did to the DEP, but as part of their public notification, they asked for us to post it on our website. So I know the school did, I've been in touch with them, and we did too, under our Board of Health portion of it. So we complied before August 31st to do that.
We skipped public forum.
We'll go back. Public forum. Anyone interested? Moving on. I'm surprised you didn't.
A little rusty. I know, usually keep you on track.
New business. VHB Consulting, we have with us this evening Jeffrey M. Morrison, Logan, Principal, New England Regional Director.
Mr. Chairman, we also have, please come forward, both of you, we also have Ms. Claire O'Neil, who's Vice President for Mass Development, who has been working with us and actually helped us get a grant through Mass Development to actually hire VHB Consulting to look at the two properties that we think have best potential at this point in time for economic development that people have been hoping for years. So this is one major piece of the work, and I think I'll let Claire begin to sort of set the precedent for how this all came about, and then we'll let Jeffrey talk a little bit and do a presentation of the initial findings.
Rock.
Thank you, thank you very much. Nice to meet members of the Board, Mr. Chairman. So I want to thank Jen very much indeed for reaching out to Mass Development. Jen and I have known each other for a number of years, and it's always a pleasure to work with her in different communities in the Blackstone Valley. As Jen said, I'm Vice President of Planning and Development with Mass Development. We're a quasi-public agency. Our main office is in Boston, we also have offices in Devon's, focused on the redevelopment of Devon's, and then we have regional offices around the Commonwealth, and I'm based out of Worcester. One of the, Jen reached out to me to discuss these two major parcels that lie off of Central Street and the community's interest in seeing those developed in the future for, for purposes of economic development and tax generation, et cetera. And so one of the things we do at Mass Development when we first start working with the community is to provide some initial seed funding to really do a preliminary investigation of sites, and from there sort of look at next steps that we might, where we might be able to help. So we're privileged to have VHB and Jeffrey's group working with us as what we call a house doctor consultant for Mass Development, and we were very pleased that he was interested in coming in and looking at these sites. And from that, you know, this is sort of some baseline information that will help Mass Development and the Urban Land Institute come into the town later in the fall and work with you to better understand these parcels and what the future potential of them might be. So ULI or the Urban Land Institute brings in volunteers, professional volunteers for a day in order to do some interviews and charrettes and make a presentation to the community on what their recommendation is. So without further ado, I'll turn this over to Jeffrey and his expertise.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I was wondering, can we get the lights maybe as well? Wouldn't be helpful, thank you. Excellent, wow, that is a big difference.
Yeah, I know.
Bathroom light or something, as long as everybody can see.
We're adjusting.
Excellent, well, thank you to the Board for having me here tonight, and Claire, thank you for a great introduction. I think that was excellent and well said in terms of the background and the history and why we're here tonight as well.
Excuse me, just a moment. If anyone who's standing want to just grab a chair and relocate it, feel free to do so. I'm not sure how long your presentation is.
It might be 10 or 15 minutes.
Plan a channel.
Right?
That's it.
Make yourselves comfortable, right?
That's all I want.
Excellent. So again, I'm the Director of our Planning, Urban Design, Landscape Architecture team at VHB, and we love working with communities like yourself in terms of trying to help understand some of the critical next steps that your town can do in terms of unlocking the potential of these pretty complex sites that you have here, and sites that typically have a unique history, long history, and that resonate with the town in terms of what you'd like to do with it and make it really an asset for the entire community here. So it's exciting for us to look at your two pieces of property and think a little bit about the constraints that anyone would have to kind of overcome and navigate as you go through a process, as you're thinking about redevelopment of the sites. So what you'll see in front of you tonight is, I'll underscore preliminary findings here, we were hired to take a look at identifying a range of issues for these sites so that we can document them, get you to some preliminary answers that we think are really going to be a first step in getting you towards some recommendations that you might think about later in this fall. So as Claire and Jen mentioned, there's two sites here. We'd like to first start with the site that's a little bit further to the south. As you can probably recognize from the map, in the middle there, we have the Blackstone River that runs right down through the middle here. Note that the railroad tracks that run up on the side over here, right across from where the old town hall, former town hall, used to be over here as well. And then as you can see in the yellow is the property line here. Obviously, many acres of land that's along your riverfront and waterfront, and as many people may know, when your community was used historically as a mill complex that had the building that burned down, there's some remnants of the facilities that are still on site there today, and obviously with the lack of that use over time, vegetation has come back and it's kind of changed in terms of what you see out there today as well. So we've had a chance to walk through not all of the sites, but significant portions of the site a few months ago, to be able to come back to you tonight with some of these observations and findings. So I think, and what we've done is intentionally fade back that image to the right, that aerial photograph, to focus on some of the points that I'd like to make to the Board tonight. So when you're thinking about sites like this, Massachusetts has some regulation that impacts the first 200 feet off of the riverfront. So if you imagine where the boundary is of this bank of the river down here towards your property line, 200 feet off of that bank is regulated by the state in terms of what you can and you cannot do within that part of your riverfront. So what's important to know is they protect things like the operations and the, and kind of the systems that relate to the riverfront. So when you think about the species that are out there, the river performance itself, those regulations are there to meant to, really to protect the river and how it operates. What's unique here is that you have a pre-existing condition in that there was a mill complex that was on this portion of the riverfront, and there's parts of the regulation that refer back to historic mill complexes and gives you the ability to be a little bit more creative about what you can do in terms of that pre-existing condition on the site as well. So let's keep that in mind as we go through. The second big part about this site is that from the, from the federal level, there is what's called the floodway. So if you think of when a major storm happens, stormwater comes down through the valley, through the river, it wants to back up, and there's certain parts of this site that are prone towards flooding. It might not happen on an annual basis, it might happen on a 10, 15, 50, 100-year basis, but those are actually regulated in terms of protecting that as a critical floodway. So when you think about putting things in the way of that floodway, those are things that you're really not supposed to do because it has an impact about where the water wants to go, either upstream or downstream. So that's a very important, critical asset to make sure that you're not impacting. This third observation that we have is obviously tying back to some of the historic mill building uses here, the two areas that are showing the light blue, the spillway that comes from the river itself in terms of its historic use. What would happen historically is that the river would peel off to the side here, come underneath the bridge, be part of the structure of the mill complex, and then spill back out into the river itself. So the remnants of some of those features are still there on the site. And to us, it was a very interesting feature, independent of what you'd like to do with the site, just knowing that the history there and some of the physical attributes are there was pretty interesting to us as a team. Looking back towards the kind of the north and east parts of the site, I'll call it, where the property line is in here, we noticed that there's some pretty steep slopes in that area as you get up towards where the single-family house is and out towards the streets and railways. So knowing that there's going to be some challenges toward development, again, independent of what you do, we just at least wanted to recognize some of the steeper slopes in this part of the site. And then when you kind of take a step back and you look at, well, kind of what's left in terms of what you can actually do with the site, I think we have learned over the years going through these types of exercises, sometimes it's, you know, easy to imagine redeveloping everything and having a grand vision. We like to at least try to point you towards what we think is a reasonable amount of potential development on this site, considering all of those things that we've mentioned so far. So this turns into several acres of land as kind of a net area in there, the area that shows up in yellow, constrained by all of the things that we mentioned up above. And if you look in particular towards this purple line here, we very much imagine that there's probably some flexibility in terms of that riverfront area to be able to have a little bit more development there because of its previously developed and because of it not really impacting the floodway areas as well. Then in terms of some opportunities, obviously, we, I think there's a benefit in not necessarily just leaving the site the way it is out there today and having some modest improvements. So we definitely see the potential for some trails that could be actually through the site and down towards the river, maybe again, connecting up to the spillway to talk about some of the heritage and the legacy and some of the historic resources that are there for the community as well. And then when you think about the other piece of the land, that, again, most of that's within the floodway, that's where some of the historic building footprints were. So that's a pretty leveled piece of land in terms of the topography, pretty flat. So there might be the ability to have some open space, recreation fields, multipurpose fields, because again, you're limited by putting buildings in there. So still think about the opportunity independent of the buildings as well. And then I think another thing that struck the entire team was this idea of access. So when you think about any development site and about being able to provide the goods and services and movement of people to and from a site, having limited access across the existing railroad tracks, which are here today, across the street here, and having to improve what you see in the pavement there today, we think independent of any scheme, you'd want to think about those types of improvements and working closely with upgrading that at-grade railroad crossing, which is in and of itself a pretty challenging thing to be able to do. And then lastly here, some of the buildings that remain, there's some building footprints out there, some of their foundations, but there's the one remaining building that's out there on the site there today, and we've seen in many other communities, while this may look like a building that should be demolished to some, to others, it might have some architectural quality, historic quality, and maybe even open up opportunity for funding in the future in terms of some historic preservation and restoration for this building. So further study we'd recommend on that building to see what it potentially could be used for. So this is a little bit of insight to how we think about these sites, because there's a lot of complexity going in here, independent of what might be out there in terms of some environmental issues that may need to be cleaned up based on the history of these sites. It's very common that there is some cleanup that needs to be required for sites like this. So these are more from the natural resources. So then we start to think about, okay, well, what could you do with a site like this? What could it afford to have on this? Again, these are not recommended one or the other, these are just things that we thought that you actually might be able to do over time, depending on how this next phase of work plays out. So we intentionally put in here a range of options based on our understanding of what gets built out there in the world and how these sites happen. So when you think about any developer that would come to this site, you need to think about, well, where are their, where's their employment base? Where are the people that are going to come to the site and their customers going to happen? How do they distribute their goods or their services, whether they're a public or private entity? And you start to quickly think about really improving the access, as we already mentioned, off to the site here, perhaps preserving that historic building and incorporating into a use here. And then when you think about the size of that yellow area in here, which might only be a couple acres of land, how much can actually fit on that piece of land? So these are indicative of what we think as a light industrial, small manufacturing user out here, that would probably look something like this, this is from a different place, that would have surface parking, a one-story tall building, maybe one or two buildings out there, about 30,000 to 35,000 is what that should say, square feet of building footprint, with about 1.5 parking spaces per thousand square feet of that type of use out there. Again, we're not advocating for this or the other, but just knowing how much stuff could actually fit on that site, depending on the marketability, depending on the users that are out there, and the desire to develop the site. A second scenario that we looked at here was just understanding like, well, what could fit there in terms of some residential development? So if this were residential apartments, maybe one or two-bedroom apartments, we know that if you look at this image down here, this equates to about 20 units per acre, so we know they've got about a couple of acres out there, that this is typically parked, not in a parking structure, but at street or in a surface parking lot, that would be able to fit about 40 units of housing out there. Again, as one of the reference point. When you think a little bit more about less rental, maybe more for-sale residential, the units tend to be a little bit bigger, the parking tends to be a little bit more of a demand in these units, the yield tends to be a little bit less, so similar idea here, but maybe you get 30 units of condominiums out there, parking at two spaces per units, and we obviously think that could fit on that site as well. Here's just one of many examples, you can imagine, of having multi-family type development out there, and you can critique the styles of this, like them, not like them, I don't think that's important, it's really just about the development capacity here. And the last scenario on this site is just this idea that land has value, and maybe the best value might be holding it for time, and understanding how you can capture that value by looking at other development scenarios and using it as a bank, so to speak. So for example, knowing that you have your former town hall site and maybe other economic development sites over time, maybe this one is used as more of a land bank to do other things that might eventually get you towards a public facility. Again, knowing you just invested major dollars in this building here, this might be a longer-term one or less on the priority list, but the idea that maybe this site could be used for some municipal uses. Redo of the police station, for example, maybe a longer-term town hall opportunity here as well. So these are just some examples of small-scale, New England village-like municipal uses that you could accommodate a couple of these uses on the site as well. Again, any of the above here is worthy of taking a look at. So let's go on to site number two. So I think you'll see the same routine here, so here, let me just point out a couple of features. So we have the former town hall building over in here, we have the police station off to the side here, the playground in the back, the driveway that comes up for the police station, the parking off the back here as well, and notice obviously the big historic green that's out here as well. What a beautiful feature. We see a lot of these types of features in the community we work with, it's great that you got that asset right there as well. So knowing that there were some issues with the former town hall and so forth, we want to at least go through the same exercise to see what you've got here. So again, fading the image back to focus on the same thing, so 200-foot riverfront. So what's interesting when you follow this line is that obviously that riverfront has already been kind of impacted by being previously developed on the riverside of this as well as on the upland side of it. So I think that would really not be much of an issue because you can make the case that it was previously developed, and to the fact that we've actually pointed out where that previously developed line is here, this red dash line follows the edge, so everything towards the riverside is pretty pristine versus everything on the other side is developed and disturbed. Thinking about your historic green out there, obviously from a development perspective, independent of what happens out there, what a great asset that is, and obviously using that as a constraint and an opportunity is something that should be considered. So that leaves us with the potential development site here as well, about. So that leaves us with the potential development site here as well, about what's pretty close to what's out there today. Whether the building stays or whether it goes, you have a great parcel there that you can do a lot of things with. So we've thought a little bit about trails and about access up in here as well. I'll get to the other bullets that are up there as well, that you can connect up to the north and to the riverfront. This idea of maybe you take the historic green and extend it out towards the riverfront over time, working through your conservation commission, and really letting your community have visual access out to the riverfront, maybe that's something that you can explore as a community. The idea of improved access and thinking about the vehicles and the drop-off and trying to clean up the drop-off and cleanup of the Fletcher Street Avenue, where the former town hall is, that's about the approximate location there in terms of what the building footprint will yield. And then in terms of a couple scenarios like we went through last time. So I think the first one here is recognizing that that building with some structural improvements and with some investment in roofing in particular, that there's several scenarios you can imagine that building be reoccupied as. We've seen a lot of communities where they'll take that type of building and they'll convert it into senior housing. It's very conducive towards that building type. So we can imagine with a small addition onto this, you might get 18 to 24 units that might be senior housing units, plenty of room on-site there to be able to park for those types of uses, to the point that we think you could do a modest addition to the building or something on maybe a smaller scale that's up into the upper right. When you think about if you were to clear the entire building as a redevelopment scenario, getting rid of what's out there, if that's what your future looks like, we see probably two or three different potential yields. The first one on the top is if it was townhouses that might look something like these in the background here, that you might get 13 or 14 units. If they're apartments, two-story, they might look like something on the right here, that might yield about 28 units. And again, a little bit scaled back if it were condominiums because the yield is typically a little bit smaller, that might be 20 units as well. And then the last one I believe that we looked at here was just this idea of converting it towards professional office. So these also are pretty conducive towards bringing small office users in this building. Maybe there's two or three of them that might fit within the building. I think the important thing to note is that the parking ratio for those user types goes up to about double what you see in a residential type of use there. So the parking off the back might need to be modified to extend a little bit more parking in that scenario. So again, with those, it was really just our preliminary findings, wanted to give you a little bit of insight about the thinking that went into it. We think there's a range of options that you could explore at the ULI panel later this fall, and I think at that panel, you might be able to dig into some of the details of these to figure out a little bit more about your next steps in particular. So with that, I'd love questions or comments.
The potential that you showed us, the possibilities.
Yes.
I hadn't realized that, you know.
That's right. Also the constraints, but there's still some potential there as well.
I do want to say thank you, especially to Claire because Claire was the person who put us in touch with you. And I know that we went down and we looked at the whole site this spring, and you know, one of the things that we don't have a luxury of in this town is having professional engineers and professional architects who just can be called upon to do that kind of analysis and to look at the property for what it really could potentially do and provide us with some ideas about the, how big something could be in terms of whether it's a housing potential or any of the other things related to the constraints that might also accompany that, whether it's parking, the environment, and the like. So I really appreciate that. I mean, I've been eager and I wanted the board to see this because I know it's part of the next step, and the next step is to really take the work that you've done now and really, you know, hone into it as a community for the day-long effort. So I really appreciate it, and I know that we had a lot of good conversation that day.
So I have a question about the railroad because it's always been a discussion point. Access over the railroad tracks.
Yes.
And we've gone back and forth with Providence Swister Railroad about how we can access, who can access it, even though Oxbridge has it like right on a main street, but there's... Have you dealt with Providence Swister Railroad in regards to anything like that and having a crossover? Because at one point, we were told we couldn't go across that for anything and that we would have to look, I call it the raceway, you called it the spillway. But we're saying how that structure itself really shouldn't be holding cars or transport because of the nature of what, how it's built. So I guess my question is, have you had any experience working with railroads to gather access to land and property as you suggested?
So I have had only experience that's very tangential, understanding that trying to get an at-grade crossing is almost impossible to do if it doesn't exist today. So knowing that you have that one there today, the first thing I'd recommend is understanding the status of what's out there today, what rights you have to cross it today, and to continue with those conversations about making improvements to what exists out there today to see if these uses could be viable. We've also looked at the spillway as well, and I think part of the issue up there is, you know, building on top of that historic structure was never really meant for that, I don't think.
Right.
But also that there's limited right-of-way as you go up towards the street to be able to have a road that goes next to it. So it requires a little bit more creativity about getting an access point up there. That's not as easy as well. So hence, more homework on both that I think would need to happen as well.
Okay.
I'm sure if you have Claire as well.
No.
Yeah. Just it's very challenging, so I think you're already on to that, but you just got to keep that conversation going.
Well, it seems to, you know, it seems to fluctuate. Maybe the chief can, there was a time when we couldn't, I mean...
From what I understand, we have an easement.
Right.
For a college business owner, that's indeed. So we really, we don't, can't allow the public to transgress over it.
Right.
So.
So yet another potential hurdle, right?
Yeah.
That's why these things take a couple steps to go through to see what you can navigate and negotiate.
Okay.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Later on in your agenda, you'll see under Town Administrator Update that the ULI TAP, the Urban Land Institute Technical Assistance Panel that Claire has helped set up, is going to be taking place on November 7th, Wednesday, November 7th. So I just ask you to put that in your calendars. There'll be stakeholders that they'll do interviews with all day. They'll actually work here on-site all day and then deliver a report to the board that evening. So I think it will have, especially because I wrote the grant in a way to say that we need those action steps aside from just, you know, what we just have been able to observe. So we'll take that off the agenda for later, but it actually segued into it, so I thought it was important just to mention the ULI TAP.
Item 7B on the agenda, special town meeting. I'm going to be asking for a vote to set the town meeting date for Wednesday, November 28th at 7:00 PM at the Millville Elementary School.
Is that the night before Thanksgiving? Is that Thanksgiving week?
It's after.
Oh, I was going to say, wow, that's not a good date. Okay.
I'll be out of the state that week on business.
Moderator and the clerk will be available at that time.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to set the special town meeting date for Wednesday, November 28th at 7:00 PM at Millville Elementary School. Second.
Roll.
Aye.
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 So moved. Toll Road, IMC.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you'll see in your packets, a request for toll road and an application. The final sign-off I was waiting for this evening came from our highway surveyor, in which he has done that. So the application itself is complete. It is for the Knights of Columbus to do the annual toll road, which will take place on Saturday, September 29th, with a rain date of October 6th, and the hours will be from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And initially, we got the letter but not the actual full application, so we did ask for that to happen, and this still allows the group to go ahead and actually conduct their toll road, having met the criteria for the full application. And neither the police chief, or fire chief, or the highway survey had any problem with it. They're pretty adept at doing this annually.
I'll hear a motion to approve toll road for the Knights of Columbus for Saturday, September 29th, 2018, with a rain date of Saturday, October 6th, 2018.
I'll make the motion to request the Knights of Columbus, September 29th, with a rain date of October 6th for a toll road.
Second.
Discussion.
I don't have a pro... Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
I think we're going to say the same thing.
Go ahead, you go.
Ladies first.
No, really. You go.
Does this include 122? And their liability issues? That's a state road?
Yeah, they've always been at that juncture, and as long as they set up the barrels, which our highway survey typically does, there's never been a problem with that. But we've had to make sure that they wear vests, they, you know...
On our streets, but on a state street, isn't that different? And don't, haven't we, he's not here.
Yes.
Haven't we been told in the past?
We have been told. Yes.
Okay. Well, I don't think your application alludes to the fact that you're saying that they can do that, but when they say Lincoln Street and Central Street...
Yes.
I think that's, you know, at the end of the day, we can tell them not to do that. I think we, I think that they do talk with our highway survey here in advance.
I think it's a state issue.
Yeah.
And if the state has something to say about it, then I think they would intervene. But our application...
Exactly.
...reflects what we're allowed, what we're permitted to authorize.
I'd say Lincoln and Central Street, so.
Okay.
And my only thing is, is I think in our application, and I don't have a problem with their times, I think in our application, it says eight to 12 or nine to one. I don't have a problem with them choosing their time. I think that was just to, because they've kind of done the whole thing. But maybe we can look at our application and maybe adjust that to, you know, whether it be a four-hour period in which they choose. Just something for future reference, so that's all I have to say.
I'll hear...
Aye.
Motion's been made.
Motion.
Aye.
Aye.
So moved.
Could I let them know?
situation and the electrical panel.
Mr. Chairman, I think if we bring up both the police chief and also, fire chief, excuse me, and also Mr. Malali, because Mr. Malali has conducted quite a bit of site assessment with regards to the water tank, and I think Mr. Wulet just went to let the chief know that we've got him up on dock, so to address both the issues. I think as we left it the last time, just to, you know, remind people that we knew that we had two capital items that were in need of being addressed, and I think if we take the actual electrical panel, the state of that, you'll see in your packets, good correspondence coming from the chief about the ordering of the part and, you know, the fixing of that. And if you want to start with the electrical panel, and then we can move into the water tank and what's actually transpired with that.
Sure. It did arrive. Came in last week. We have a tentative date of October 5th to have it installed. There's two contractors involved, plus the supplier of the panel itself, so we have to coordinate it, try to get everything done in one day. School is out that particular day. So hopefully, it's a one-day install. If not, we do have the Saturday, Sunday, and that Monday, which is a holiday to finish the job. So having said that, I think we're good to go with that particular project. We have it, the date's set up, so I think we're good to go. Do you have an electrician? We do. Good. So I don't think we have any hurdles, and it should go smooth, hopefully. Thank you.
And then the next thing we talked about was the fact that our water tank at the MES has been losing water, apparently, over time. And initially, the chief had set out and had hired somebody in to do an analysis of the actual water line to see if there was an ability to ascertain if there was a leak and where could that be. Initially, they had done the work and had come up with an area that they thought there was a leak, and the chief had instructed Mr. Malali along with an outside vendor to actually excavate when he was out of town. Now you can update him what the status is on that one.
Sure.
It's elusive.
It looks like we still have a leak. It's very elusive. Can't seem to find it. So the school department, they're going to install a new meter in the tank within the next couple of weeks. Once that's installed, we'll take more accurate measurements and we'll see just how bad the leak is. At that time, I spoke to Brian about it, if it's still leaking, I really can't tell you what to do other than just start digging the entire length of the pipe, which would be rather costly. So right now, it's not a safety hazard whatsoever. We lose a little bit of water, we fill it back up. That's what we've been doing for the last few months, and that's what we're going to continue to do until we have a better idea where it is. We did spend the time, we had a company come out and isolate where the leak was, and I wasn't, Brian was able to help me out with that, that particular week I was gone, they did dig, and they found the leak. So having said that, they found running around water, which would mimic a leak. So having said that, Brian's a little bit more involved with the construction of it than I am, the leak could be anywhere from the school to the tank.
Yeah, like you said, the company pinpointed where they thought we had a leak, which was in front of the loading docks. They were pretty sure of it, and they were right, there was water there. We dug a whole section of pipe, which is 21 feet in length. We dug under it, around it, cleaned out the joints, and there was no leak. A lot of groundwater, a lot of moving groundwater. Typically, if you have a steel cast pipe, which the fire suppression line is a 12-inch steel pipe, you won't find it leaking at, during a section of pipe. It'll be at a joint. It'll be a failed fitting. Fittings we found were solid. So we filled the hole back in, we contacted the company again, they were happy to find, here that we dug there, they weren't happy to hear that we didn't find it. So they came back out a few days later. By the time they arrived, we had that hole open again for a second time. At this time, they could, they verified with us it was moving groundwater. They were able to put their instruments on the pipe itself. So when they do this, they put, it's all done by radio waves, hydrant inside the school, they were able to do the pipe, the tank. For a little bit of time there, they came up with nothing. Then they started coming up with a little more detection, just trying to give you a history of how this system, how sensitive it is. They started picking up moving water closer to the school where it goes in. The chairman at this time actually showed up up there at the school when we started digging in that spot. The ground in that spot showed no water, dry as a bone, a lot of utilities, electric pipes on top of water pipes, sewer lines wrapping around it, very, very delicate dig. If you have to dig in this area, if you're going to start digging up this line, it's going to be costly just to go in the section. But with that being said, what they found when we got down there was the well line coming into the school was crossing over the hydrant line, which was moving water because small water systems just so happened to be at the school, filling the drinking water tank for the start of school that day. By the time we found all that out, we were already in the ground, and they were picking up the moving water in the well line at the hydrant line. So at that point, I made the determination to backfill everything. School was starting that following week. We got it all compacted, paved back up so that school could take their deliveries and handed it back off to the... and handed it back off to the chief.
So we'll wait and see. We'll have the new device installed. And we'll take accurate measurements, and we'll see what's going on. And if it's determined that it's still leaking, we'll have to find a way to pay for it. Let's, Brian, donate your time, dig for me.
Typically, the loss is averages a couple hundred gallons.
It's like 175 to 200 gallons a day. You know, it doesn't sound like a lot of water, but it is, because it's a closed system, it shouldn't be leaking at all. It goes between the tank and the school. It's one pipe, you shouldn't have any loss. I mean, especially 200 gallons. So it's somewhere, but we don't want to spend a lot of money till we really know where it is.
How are you measuring the loss now? If you don't have a meter in this system?
With the tape measure? You go to the top of the tank.
Okay.
And you measure down from the lid.
Right.
To the top of the water, and you get that measurement.
Yeah.
And not only are we doing it, the school maintenance person, Greeny, he's doing it.
Okay.
And Small Water, they're doing it. So three people have concluded they're losing water. So check and balance, so. I didn't rely on just my two guys. Greeny, he's the one that reported in the first place. And then Green, Clean Water, they've been there measuring it as well. So we're losing water.
Yeah.
But, like I said, it's not something that's a hazard or a threat to the school. Greeny just fills the tank back up. So that's all it is. But we have to fix it. I mean, we have to find a leak and fix it.
Right.
All it does is put a little more stress on the well.
Well, it does, you're correct, you're correct. Right. That's all it does.
So we'll get an update as we go along. And I do appreciate the attempt to locate it. I think we all do. It's been, it's been very perplexing, you know, for each one of them. And, you know, we, we'll get down to the bottom of it sooner or later. Thank you.
Thank you, June.
Thank you.
Tonight, I'll be asking for a vote to appoint alternate delegates to CMR PC. We have a submission from Michelle Demont and Richard Hurtu.
So they're the delegates.
Yeah, they're from the planning board, so we need one from the board. We couldn't muster up someone at that time. They were going to look into their schedules and see if they might have flexibility.
So you just.
As an alternate.
I'll take that.
Thank you.
It's Tom.
Do you want to vote to appoint?
No, I'll vote, I'll make motion to be on the alternate for the CMR PC.
I second that real quick.
Roll.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Holt.
Didn't you say aye, Tom? Sure, right there, five, okay.
It doesn't matter.
No, thank you, because I know I have, I have the Girl Scouts at night, so. I appreciate it.
I do too. I wanted to get it off your agenda. And just to be mindful, that the CMR PC has done a lot of work with us. And we've not just contracted with them, but the technical assistance that they provided for the grant work that we did from completing our master plan to zoning, doing a zoning diagnostic, working with us intensely for completing our open space recreation plan, and then providing fill-in assistance for working in the absence of our town planner, in helping draft our bylaws for marijuana. They've been really invaluable. So it's really good to have, you know, somebody who is going to be able to fill in, especially if our planning board delegate cannot. So thank you, Mr. Holt.
You're welcome.
Item 9A, Friends of the Library, benefit of.
Mr. Chairman, I asked for you to put it on the agenda. I had several board members who had been contacted for different reasons, by different people, about this particular event. We are, I thought it was important to give an update. There was an application that was received on the evening of last Wednesday. And looking at it, it looks like it will be a terrific event that will actually have the Friends of the Library and the library itself be a beneficiary for some of the funds that they anticipate on raising. But it is an event that initially started out with Marty's Liquors. It's going to, and you can see in your packet, preliminarily, the application talks about having a number of food trucks, the Food Truck Festivals of America, they go around the country. When the application was submitted, it already actually had as the organization that's based out of Austin, that they had listed Millville as having an upcoming event on Saturday, October 13th, from 12 to 5:00. It is a, looks like a very fun event. But because it involves food trucks, and also today, I've received an additional application for entertainment license. So there were some things before putting it in front of you that need to be addressed, so we can do one comprehensive packet. The reason why is, even with our Board of Health, there's a number of things that need to be addressed. And that relates to individual permits for each actual truck that comes, along with the porta-potties that they're going to have set up. But you'll get a chance to see the entire packet. And like I said, it looks like it will be a very exciting and good event. And, you know, I think that once all of the items are met, we'll have it on the docket for September 17th, which gives, you know, plenty of time for them to continue to execute it. It did not make sense to put just each individual license in front of you, because it's comprehensive. You wouldn't want to approve a liquor license for one day for a food event, in which then it, we couldn't get the Board of Health agent to go and inspect the trucks, and they didn't file the paperwork for the permits. If you did that, then you would have just essentially a beer fest, and that's not what would have been the intent of the event. And nobody's trying to assert that. It's just that there are quite a few items. And today, like I said, I received another additional aspect through the event related to an entertainment license that the board also has to actually approve. So I think if we put it together as a packet on September 17th for full approval, that would be good.
I think maybe it might be helpful for the Friends of the Library to know that we're supporting this, and we are just waiting for all of the docs to be in the row to approve it. Unless someone feels otherwise, I just don't want them to be surprised later when someone says no. I mean, right now, with what I'm looking at, I, I have no problem supporting this, this event.
As long as the chief signs off, and the Board of Health signs off, and all the signatures that we typically wait for and need, they see no problem, I think it'd be a good event.
And we don't have all of that yet, but we are chasing that down. And, you know, both, I think, through the contacts, through the friends, but also, more importantly, the hosts of the event that are actually, actually using their insurance and having to comply and writing out the checks. It's not the friends, the friends will be the beneficiary.
Right.
So let's, let's get everything together to make that happen. And, but it won't be just the friends. Obviously, it's also to support a local business that, you know, has come together and is willing to host this event. But it, it's great, from what I understand, that the, one of our trustees, Ms. Foley, who I know is here, happened to actually approach Marty's Liquors, who we already know has been very helpful to the town, especially with that playground with a very sizable donation. She was looking for a raffle item to place for one of their raffles that they were doing for the Friends. And it just so happened that, right around that same time, they were planning on doing this event, and then contacted her, and then said, would you be interested? And then, you know, as both a trustee and a friend of the library had handed over to Ms. Lima. And Ms. Lima started the, you know, preliminary application, which I'm grateful for. But, you know, we just got to get the rest of it, and we'll put it together, and it'll be a great event. We can all go and eat, hopefully.
The event is scheduled for October 13th.
October 13th, from, from their website, yep.
Yep.
Yes. And that'll all be on the, the final application that you have. Okay?
Yep.
That was item 9A, on Selectman's forum. Item 9B. It's very sad to have to announce that I'm in receipt of a letter of the termination, not termination.
Is that you're fired? Well, you can leave again.
There you go.
Resignation.
Resignation. Our town administrator has accepted a position in the town of Oxford. And she'll continue through November, September.
September 23rd.
Did you try?
I tried.
However, Mrs. Callahan will be available on a consulting basis through October. As, as we need to continue and carry through with a number of the projects and issues that we're dealing with at the present time. So it saddens me that you're leaving us, but you've done such a great job.
Thank you. Well, it's, I told you in the letter, it comes with a lot of mixed feelings. And I, I think there's an awful lot that continues to show that this town has done remarkable work in a two, and a quarter years. And it's set to continue doing the work that it needs to. The areas that needed to be fixed have been fixed. But then, you know, we still have that entire structural deficit that is always going to continue to loom. But despite all that, think about that. We had the VHB consulting people here this evening. All of these things that have happened, from all of the different grant opportunities that we have taken and put forth, just mean that the town continues to be on the move. And I have a great confidence, I said in my letter, with the town employees and the work that they do day in and day out. I have great confidence in this board, that they'll continue to do exceptional work and always be doing what's right by the townspeople. So with that part of it, I think the town of Oxford understood that they were asking for a fairly quick timeframe, because their interim is not well. And just like they also understood that the town here needs to have a transition as well. So that's what we're going to do. And I think, like I said, that with some of the things that we're going to be addressing over the next several weeks in my town administrator update, you know, you'll see that we're moving all projects forward. And the, and the board will continue to do what it does best, which is act in the best interest of the town. So that's what I want to make sure of. And there were projects that I wanted to try to complete. But if I can't complete them, I assure you, they'll get completed on a timetable that's reasonable and can make this board and this town proud. And that is what I'd like to accomplish in my final days here. And it's been really a classic case of honor and privilege to serve this town. And to, to do it during incredible challenges, I'm not going to lie. I've done a lot of different work in my life, from trauma nurse all the way to being a legislator in the State House. And bar none, this has been exceptionally challenging over the past two and a quarter years, but very, very rewarding, very rewarding. So with that, I say thank you to the board for giving me the opportunity, and most importantly, to the townspeople as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
In the transition period, I have the full support of this board. And I will do what I can to assist in this transition. Comments? If not, we'll move forward, move ahead.
I just have an item in the Selectman's forum. I just wanted to thank the staff at Millville Elementary, the students at Millville Elementary, for being great hosts to our neighbors from AFM, who have been at the school because of issues at their town. I think the new principal has a tremendous amount on her plate this year because of the staff cuts, the classrooms being multi-age, multi-grade levels. And then to have one more thing put on her plate, I think Mrs. Schaefer did an amazing job, my own children, I don't know about yours, but it was seamless. And it was, it was just, I was very impressed with the, with the staff and the students from both towns, and how they handled it and made it work. So just a big shout out to them, and appreciation for what they do there on top of the hill.
Absolutely.
Anyone else? Town administrators report.
Yes. So the last time we had gotten together, I had asked for permission, or direction from the board about the fact that there was going to be final pricing for electricity aggregation, meaning we'd go back out on the market. Our one-year contract was expiring this coming November. And having to take an opportunity of the pricing that we did the last time, which was 100% green energy supply to the town, we definitely saved this town collectively on a competitive rate-to-rate basis for green energy, all rate payers, which would be, you know, the town, municipality, residents and businesses, well over $100,000 over the course of a year, and anticipated all the way to November, let's just say. But having said that, we had to think about going out. So the board said to look at what the final pricing was going to be before national grid rates come out. And oftentimes, you can get more competitive rates prior to that. We've talked at length about the fact that the southeastern Massachusetts area for electricity supply pertains to this town. And unfortunately, there's been this excess capacity issue that has driven our pricing up. If you look at your electric bills, you'll understand that over in the last year and a half, they went through the roof. The last time, we were talking about rates somewhere in the previous time span of nine cents last fall. And yet, when they came out, the pricing range was substantially higher, and we were able to, to get a lower rate over a period of time. So on, in August, on August 29th, I think it was, the rate came out prior to national grids release. If we have this ongoing capacity issue, which Mark Capadona from Colonial Power, who's our aggregate representative, will continue to tell you that looking at the average, if you look on the, this particular graph, it shows you the historic averages for national grid. And they're predicting that the rate for this fall will be somewhere between 13, 13 and a half cents per kilowatt. Next fall, they're expecting that, that same rate will be about 13 cents. And then the following year, about 12 and a half cents. Obviously, seasonally, it goes down a little bit, but not, not substantially. So their advice was that if we could get a good rate and lock in, then we should try to do that. And understand that, you know, if we can save for six months out of the year, and it comes to be a little bit more competitive later on in the spring, then we still will be ahead for the community. So having done that, I took the calls. And what we have in front of you is the actual rate that I actually did sign on. You authorized me to, to make that decision, but I did it after speaking with the chairman. We saw a very competitive rate come in at 11.4 cents, which is pretty much where we were at last year for 100% green wind product, meaning our energy is being derived and supplied by a total green source. And if we were to compare that, say, with the national grids green source, I can tell you right now, it's, that just blows that rate that we would get from national grid away. But national grid is due to have its rate come out for just as brown energy, which they're anticipating will be at 13 and a half cents. So I, I think it's a good rate. One of the things that you want to remind everybody that if for some reason, you know, for the next six months, everybody takes the benefit of that, and the, the rate continues to, to outperform what national grid is going to, you know, come up with. But if the residents or business says, you know what, in the spring, we could actually save a little bit mon, more money by opting out, residents and rate payers can opt in and opt out. So, so we're just providing the framework for the townspeople to try to allow them to take benefit of a good rate. But if for some reason, down the line, we, you know, don't get that classic trend where we save all the way through, people can opt out. So I thought it was prudent to do the 11.4% of four cents for 36 months, because that was by and far the, one of the best rates. And we're not the only community that was trying to take, take advantage of that. I think the one thing you want to remind everybody is that I think people have gotten used to a very stable rate this past year. And if you see these peaks up and down, it can get really confusing for people. And if we can keep the rate stable over a period of time, I think it will be more helpful to the community.
helpful to the community. So, you see also in your packet, the actual, um, it will be with, uh, direct energy, not Nextera. Last, last time around, it was with Nextera. So, nothing changes, people will just see it changes on their bill, um, and unless they want to opt out of it for some reason. And, uh, we had over eight hundred and ninety-some-odd people who had, uh, opted into the program the, the last time, so it's a sizable amount for households in this town.
Thank you.
Yep. And the next, um, item, you'll see, uh, host agreement negotiations. I wanted everyone to put in their calendar, we've had, um, both, uh, Marty's Liquors and also the Blackstone Valley Cultivation, uh, both who had asked, um, for the board's, uh, support and going forward to apply for licenses, uh, for marijuana, either cultivation or retail. And, um, both, um, have put forward requests to meet with the board, to discuss host agreements. I prompted them a little bit to try to, try to do this as soon as possible. Uh, so, they, um, have agreed that we could actually conduct two, uh, different, uh, host agreement negotiations, one starting on six o'clock and one starting at seven-thirty on Wednesday, September twelfth. Uh, both, um, companies would be available at that time. So, I would hope that we could at least get a quorum, uh, to begin, uh, that work. And, uh, obviously I'll have some information in advance for that as well.
My poll, uh, for availability.
Mm-hmm.
I'm good for that, too.
It's in my calendar.
It's on your calendar, alright.
If it's in my calendar, it happens.
Yeah, I can make that.
Yeah. Alright.
Sure, it looks good.
Good. Alright, we have it in there, locked in. The next item on the, uh, town administrator's update is, um, a budget update. I wanted the board to, uh, know that in advance, on September seventeenth, myself and the finance director will be doing an update on the status of the closing of the fiscal year two thousand nineteen. There were a number of things that we've been working on, um, steadily through, uh, the summer, along with some of these other aspects that, uh, you know, we anticipate can, um, also generate some one-time revenues. But, I'd rather be able to do a presentation to the board so that, um, the board will know in advance as we go into.
Now, it's fiscal eighteen.
No, no, no. No, it's for this year.
For this year, okay.
Yep, yep. And closing the three hundred thousand dollar budget deficit. So, we'll give, you know, an update on that. And then, uh, I already talked about the ULI TAP, which will be slated for November seventh on Wednesday. I'll let you know, um, that evening, you'd have to be available probably about six o'clock, between five and six o'clock in the evening. And if, um, and if any of you wind up being part of the stakeholder, uh, groups that they meet with, uh, we may need to make you available, so, uh, we'll talk about that. I'm in the process right now of pulling together a pretty substantive, uh, binder of information. It's, uh, we're required to, uh, create a, a contents table, um, and then actually create the document that these professional, uh, planners and architects, uh, look at specifically and, um, economic development people. And so, we provide that framework. And of course, what we did tonight, uh, with this presentation, we'll go into that, but I've asked, uh, my town planner, if she's still here, she's, no, um, she's working with that, um, we're culling off some of this information. Uh, that can be quite detailed, uh, and it's detailed because they need to really look at those to be able to help the town frame what will be the actionable steps, um, towards actually doing something with one or both of those sites that we started to talk about. So, it's the second half of what amounts to about a fifty thousand dollar, uh, grant opportunity. The, the first was what we saw tonight, where, um, that was sponsored by Mass Development. And, um, and then they were able to get, um, the Urban Land Institute to do the remaining portion, which winds up being about an additional, um, thirty to, uh, forty thousand dollars in consulting services that they'll offer to the town, um, that we're not having to, to pay for. So, that part of it is great. And then the final thing on the town administrator update is, I, I put on out-of-district transportation, um, and it says, uh, state reimbursement. I wanted to, uh, address this, uh, because it's been perplexing to me. In the past, when we have provided out-of-district, um, transportation costs, uh, once upon a time, prior to my coming, I understand that it was originally housed at the, or taken care of in terms of the signing of an agreement through the school district. And at some point, this town had opted, uh, to, to take it out of the school district. I think they thought maybe we could get more competitive rates, uh, for transportation. But, there's been questions about, um, the state reimbursement, as you know, for regional school transportation. Um, there is reimbursement and it fluctuates depending on what the budget year is. You know, this year looked like eighty percent reimbursement to regional school district. But, the difference, um, here is the out-of-district, uh, transportation, even though these students are going to another regional school district. Our town's not part of that regional district like Norfolk, Aggie, even though it's a program that only they can offer, we don't pay for the facilities like we do for Blackstone, Millville and Regional. However, um, I always remember that, uh, regardless of that, whether the school held the agreement or the contract for the busing, or the town did, there used to be much more substantive reimbursement for communities. And for some reason, about two years ago, uh, or so, right when I was coming in, um, the legislature took a three million dollar item for funding out-of-district transportation and cut it down so badly, now it's only two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the entire line item for a hundred and thirteen communities. Which is, for us, amounts to about two hundred and, I mean, two thousand, three hundred dollars. So, our finance director, we did put in for it, we got, that's how much money we got because they're only funding it at two hundred and fifty thousand. That was a huge cut. And I only bring this up because I think that as we go forward and we're trying to address those kinds of, uh, unanticipated costs, regardless of whether the school district takes it or us, we would, either one of us would apply for the reimbursement, but the reimbursement's not eighty percent like regular districts get. Um, but it would be more substantive if, even if it was at, um, you know, five percent, and, you know, you would get a bigger pool of money to be able to tap into. So, uh, I would just say that this should be something that you really press legislators for, um, and, and hold, you know, people accountable for fighting for that. Because, you know, when you go from three million dollars to two hundred and fifty thousand, you know, it, it's, it's a big hit to communities that are having to provide this transportation. And, um, I mean, I'd rather see the town be able to get more money as well. So, I mean, I'm gonna take that because no matter what community you're in, if you have a community that's providing out-of-district, uh, transportation to another regional school, you know, that's, that's someplace that we should actually be able to help communities. And, um, and I would advocate that that would be something that the town would wanna, um, make sure of in, uh, especially after these elections and they'll stop bill filing. It'll be something that I think we'll all try to press. I know I will even in another community try to press that. So, um, that would be the, uh, conclusion of the town administrator update. I do have signatures for you, your next meeting will be Sun, uh, Sunday. Yeah. Next meeting will be Monday, September seventeen. Thank you.
Thank you. We have two sets of signatures.
Do this one. I don't know which telephone you wanted me to put, but I didn't wanna put your cell phone.
No, thank you.
Okay, you can, you don't wanna sign for the pink one? Okay? Is that alright? I can put the telephone number here, five oh eight. I can run another in. Home. I think it's funny that you have it ready.
I'm always about getting stuff done, you know that, man. Five steps to his. Sometimes, not all. I do my best, like everybody else.
This is, um...
Oh, that's the tollbooth?
Oh, yeah. Looks like then that we put this one up, but that's not, we put, uh, food truck up. Joan, I forgot to give you my dates that I'm not available. I think I'm gonna write them on a piece of paper now, I'm just gonna... Nope, nope, I have your pen.
Oh.
I only have a pencil today. I didn't sign the, the toll day. I was thinking they were all... Whatever it is. Thank you.
I'll hear a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn? Second.
Roll.
Aye.
Aye.
Alright. Thank you all.